The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dave.
Okay, motion to approve the agenda and we need to amend it.
We have two things to add. We're going to approve the promotion of Roger Bennett to sergeant for the sheriff's office effective today, or no, March 29th, I'm sorry. And then we have approved re-controlled quote for chemicals.
Control what?
We control chemicals.
Oh, we control, excuse me. I'd make a motion to go with the amended agenda, as Peggy stated.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Foe.
Minutes, I don't think there's any amendments to the minutes. Dive through them, double check everybody, hey, looks pretty good. Make a motion, approve minutes from three twenty-five.
One second.
I'll second.
Aye.
Okay, general public concern?
That would be me.
You got something you want to bring up?
Yes, I do. This year, 2019 is a reassessment year. And every two years, we got to revalue property. And we have to be within market, at market value as close as you can. Actually, we have to be within ninety-five to a hundred and five on our median for our sales. So with that, residential properties has been selling very well. They're not on the market very long and they've been selling way higher than our set value. So we, for 2019, I just want to inform all of you and the public that we raised residential fifteen percent.
How much?
Fifteen.
Fifteen percent?
We raised agricultural dwellings fifteen percent. Agricultural dwellings is the house sitting out on a farm. We raised commercial five percent. And these are all based upon sales that have come through our office on residential and commercial property. The commercial property, we don't have as many sales. So the Department of Revenue comes in and does a random sampling of properties that we have that they'll go out and do their own appraisals on them. And then we combine them with our sales to see where our median lies. So with that, we're raising commercial five, we haven't raised commercial, it looks like maybe 2009 was the last time we maybe had an increase for them.
How about the residential and ag dwellings, when's the last time you ever raised? Do you know?
Twenty seventeen.
That's what I thought, that was just recently.
Yes.
So we've had that big of a jump and just since then?
Yes, yes. We have some properties where a hundred thousand plus low. So, which is, it's good that the market is strong, it's good. And people should realize, I hope they realize, that just because their value goes up doesn't mean that their taxes should go up accordingly, the same amount. If at all, it just depends on what you guys do for the levy, for the county, the schools, the hospital, you know, it's just usually when the values go up and the levies drop, so.
So the fifteen and five percent increases in valuation?
In valuation. That doesn't mean your taxes are going to go up that much.
Right, that's a point well made, it's the valuation.
Right. And these are, this is law that we have to follow.
That's what I was going to ask, if you don't do it, the state comes in and...
They will.
They will do it across the board. When we do it in-house, we have the choice of, you know, we think this area should be more, this area should be less. And we've done that, particularly on the residential, we'll, we do that. If the Department of Revenue gives you an equalization order in the fall, it's across the board and you've got to equalize it to that amount. So, we like to do it in-house. I mean, I think it's more fair to the property owner. Agricultural went down.
How much?
Twenty-nine percent.
Wow.
That's about, you want to know how many dollars?
Probably not. Yeah.
Hundred and seventy-two million.
That's how much it dropped?
Yep.
And that is based on productivity?
Yes, it is. We have a productivity factor that we use for that. And that's based on the last prior five years of information on grain prices, landlord expense, and then it's capitalized at seven percent, so. So it went down, it'll take quite a while to get that back.
To gain that back, yeah, because you're only allowed to go up so much at a time.
Right.
What is, three percent a year?
Yes, but there's the bill.
So a twenty-nine percent decrease, that's eight, yeah, in your ten years to gain that back.
We've just kind of gotten where we're getting back the last days' drop.
Yeah.
But it is what it is, so. And there's also a bill out there that wants to cap it even more. We'll see what happens about. Once you cap it.
So, how is, particularly on the ag land, are you looking at that every year then?
No, that's every two years.
It's every two, everything is every two years?
Correct.
On valuation?
So there's a cap on how high, it can only go up to percent, but there's some cap on how much it can drop?
It could drop whatever it wants, but it can only go up three percent a year, which isn't right.
No, that's not right at all. They should have a floor on it, too.
Because it's based on productivity. Well, you know, the markets could change pretty rapidly. And then you're lagging behind, but when the markets go sour, you go way down and then you take forever to get caught back up.
So that's a county by county?
Yes.
Wow.
We're at fifteen...
Where are we, I was going to say, where are we in the midst of all of the ones around here?
Oh, I have a list, if you want to see us, we're just average.
Average?
Yeah, we're at fifteen, what we reduced it, it's fifteen seventy-three an acre is the average assessed value for farmland, you know, some's less, some's more. Before, I think we were at twenty-four something, I should have brought that with me, but... But it took a big drop.
So the bill in question at the state level is to raise that cap for the...
No, they want to make it less.
Yes.
It's at three percent right now, they want to make it less?
Yeah.
Actually, it's a little bit different type of bill. They want to do a cap on how much you can raise taxes, the tax dollars, to two percent. Which is, is I act against that? I would think it would be, it will, it will put a crunch on counties.
There again, state can keep their fingers out of this, it's a county by county, could be a county by county decision.
And I know for a fact that the county level is very cautious of what they spend. I think they're more cautious than they are on the state level.
By far.
So, but they're always wanting to seem to go after us, I don't know.
Well, that's a fair statement. I don't know, they have enough other concerns at the state level, they don't need, they keep throwing stuff back that should be county business and somehow it gets into the state business and I think the county's no better.
Well, and it's been kind of mentioned that maybe this particular person has kind of an axe to grind to, so. I don't know where, I don't know where it's going to go. I hope it doesn't.
Then go.
Yeah, it's still a study bill, but they still have time, so we're watching it.
So once you get those valuation or that gets out, you're assuming your phone number will be probably well...
Yeah, it's better to happen.
I can already hear the conversations, I'm going to hear some of these numbers.
Yes, I just want you all to be forewarned on it and, you know, it's right, they have every right to ask why, you know, why, and they don't understand, a lot of them don't understand that if you don't do anything to your property, that your property values still go up. You know, if you don't do a thing, any improvement, it can still go up, so, just because of the way the laws...
That's market value.
That's market, right.
That's market value.
Yep. Then another thing with our disaster declaration, this puts our border review session, the petition is usually, has to be filed between April 2nd through April 30th, 31st, how many days we got in April, 30th. This extends it to June 5th, the filing time. And then the session itself will be until June 15th. And I guess it's not because of, for people to file on things affected by the disaster, but it's more of a timeframe because people are doing other things related to disasters and that, that it gives them more time to file to the border review. So, the assessments went out Friday, and they'll be online today.
So this fifteen percent increase went out Friday?
Yes. Yeah, and I'm going to get it transferred over to the website when I go back, so people can look at it.
So they have two days, got their taxes paid and then the new stuff?
Yeah, it's going to stay.
I got mine for my uncle from Webster County on Sunday, or Saturday.
It'll go up. There is, it's just, now north of us, she was telling me that her residential isn't quite as active as ours, for some reason, I don't know why, but it's, and there's things in one of the markets that they're gone that day.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm well aware of the residential market.
Yeah. So, that won't happen unless you have any questions.
All kinds of good news.
Yeah, well, it is in a way, I mean, it's better than...
Better than having your property go down and die.
Exactly, right.
Nobody really wants that.
Nobody wants that either.
No, no.
Now you're not going to say April.
I asked you all about that or not, no.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I go in and get my coffee earlier in the morning tomorrow?
Okay, next on the agenda is, I'd like to appoint Jackie Samuelson to investigate where it placed complaints for employee handbook, they need a neutral party in there, according to the handbook, so, I have a motion to appoint.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jackie Samuelson.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foe, carry. Okay, Ben, hear up.
Morning. Short agenda for you guys today from these things.
Time to paint, paint lines?
Yeah, time to look at approving a quote from ETS, Easy Line or Local Traffic Services out of Orange City. They've done our striping for the last twenty years, I think we have reached out and gotten pricing from other companies. These guys seem to shoot up the heck of a deal. Their pricing did go up about twenty cents a gallon between this year and last year, but if you look at the sum raise, it's still cheaper than what we had in the twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen area.
And this will all be done whenever they're through the area, right?
Same timeframe, yeah, it'll be usually after our...
Hopefully we get our drifts off the road that they can paint through.
Yeah, they come in about the end of July, beginning of August, so our paving should be done by then.
Is this just new paving?
Uh, no, this will be maintenance paving, it's new paving as well as maintenance.
New and then, and your maintenance is selected areas?
Usually, yeah, selected areas, usually our center line gets hit every other year, edge lines about every three, I believe. Stop bars and rail, stop bars are every year, railroad tracks are every other.
Okay, that was a question on the...
Yeah, we split the railroad tracks and do half each year, basically.
So they're just based on the thirteen ninety a gallon, that's all, however many gallons you use, that's what you're paying for?
So however many gallons you use is what you pay for, so if you've got quite a bit of no pass, then you're going to pay more.
Right, so they don't do it by the mile, they do it by the gallon.
First class. Be kind of ugly colored.
Yeah, I want to know it.
You can do white.
It's true.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote with Local Traffic Services at thirteen ninety a gallon.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foe, carry. Approve the co-op dust control contract, dollar fifteen a foot, is that up to last year?
This is the same price as last year. Pro Co-op was the only one that gave us a quote for the lignin sulfate. Dino's uses strictly the calcium chloride. We have one resident out in the country that likes Dino's, that we allowed them to use the calcium chloride last year. The problem with calcium chloride is it's clear. So, in this instance, they didn't tell us that they came in, our bladed operator bladed through it the day after they put it down.
Oh, that was a good deal. I think I remember that.
Pro Co-op does the tree sap or lignin sulfate, you know, I mean, it's darker color, you can see it on the ground and stay away from it.
We also try to do it, I'd say we also try to get those bladed before every, so we know, so if people are going to sign up.
After we award, we'll probably start hauling our spring rock here towards the middle of this week. I'm putting together the rock maps right now for all the guys. And then what we'll do is we'll haul the, haul the rock out here where they're doing the dust control, blade through it right before Pro Co-op's going to come in and spray it and then should be good for the season.
So, they let you know where they're spraying?
Yeah, they have to give us a customer list, so, usually it's the same thirty people that do it every year. But we do, it seems like every year we do have a couple of people that call in and ask about dust control, you know, new people that move out in the country and didn't realize how dusty it was going to be.
Yeah, that's true.
What's the approximate date that they do the dust control?
Usually it's the first couple of weeks in May, so by like May 15th, they're looking at putting their first application down and then the second application is end of July, beginning of August, so.
One, yeah, just a technical question, between the first and second application, have you ever had to go out before the second application and maybe grade?
With it being our road, we have the right that if it becomes an issue, we can blade through.
Because you know where everything is at that point, so you kind of do it accordingly then if need be?
Our phone usually rings off the hook when we end up doing it, you know, because we blade through the dust control.
But I mean, if that's a...
Between the passes.
But if that's a week, if that's a week before they come to reapply it, then it's not a big, big issue.
Right, and the only time that we really do is if it gets washboarded really bad.
I would make a motion, did we get the motion on that or were you discussing it? I'd make a motion that we approve the dust control for Co-op for the dollar fifteen a foot for this year.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foe, carry.
Other than that, we've got a pre-construction meeting tomorrow for the paving project with the Nats. We'll find out a better timeframe when they're looking at moving in. Right now, preliminarily, they're staying, middle of April, they'll start moving in with their milling machine on the hardy stretch of road, so the road will still be open to traffic while they're doing the milling. It won't be until we actually start paving, which is usually about two weeks later, so. About a month from now, we'll probably start paving at the north end of the county line, working towards Hardy. Good days they go.
Still at one, your meeting's still at one?
The meeting is still at one tomorrow. Out of secondary roads? Out of secondary roads, out of department. We are also planning on closing C-20 west of Livermore by Eric's Place tomorrow. County crews are going to peel out the rock that we put down for that patch and contractor is supposed to be showing up on Wednesday to put that patch in. So estimated timeframe for that is one week of closure. So we'll close it on Tuesday, hopefully we'll have it open by next Wednesday.
We close it tomorrow and then we'll surely get rain Wednesday.
Well, they're not looking at four until probably Thursday.
No, I know, but they'll peel this rock out and then they'll fill it with...
Well, as long as it's closed, so that's fine.
Yeah.
But you know, when we talked about put up, it's going to take phenomenal barricades by the, because nobody believed the road was stolen when they put it in.
No.
They didn't believe it. They didn't believe it, and we don't want, and I know it's not a road, I mean, it's just the, over the culverts, we don't need anybody driving through the concrete.
No.
Well, it's been, you've had it posted on Facebook and I've seen numerous people sharing it, so, well, it helps, so if someone's...
It helps get the word out.
They share it and someone else sees it.
I've got people, yeah, they're aware of it, which is good, and it's a week, don't go there. We don't need somebody driving through the concrete.
Definitely not. What else you got? That's about it, I guess we'll start hauling rock here, middle to end of the week and guys will be out blading, we're still fixing washboarded areas, we've still got areas that are underwater. Tried to look at Murray Bridge last week, I mean, you still can't even get anywhere close to it. Water's going down, but it sounds like it's going down really slow. It's still really high up in the Emmitsburg, Yesterville area, so it's going to take a while before we get, get the water off of these locations anyway.
Here, go compile on the list for FEMA?
Yep, guys are still, as we're opening these roads, they're doing their day labor sheets and putting things together for FEMA.
And that ditch I told you about up on Ohio on Hundred Street?
Yep.
That could be FEMA.
Okay. I put that on the list, on the work order list.
Yeah, any of that stuff like that that's washed out that badly, that could be FEMA?
Yep.
I think that a month or three, you want it from?
Yeah, I don't think they can.
Have they put a cutoff date?
I think I seen it, it was a month they added on to it. Okay. Yeah, they haven't reached out for the kickoff meeting for that yet, so.
They're at least coming around slowly, the little roads are shaping up, and they're doing, our crews are doing a good job and pass that on, because there's a lot of, they've been out there working on them, so. And the wind blowing, I hate to say that, helps, but...
Sun and wind.
Lack of rain, lack of snow helps a lot.
They are getting a few more pumps from the frost bubbles that are popping out, but I guess that's what we get, so.
Yeah, and we'll be, we'll be putting on a map anywhere that we've got frost boils and seeing if there's something that we can do to fix those.
They get to be consistently every year if that thing's, yeah.
Yeah, some of it can be fixed just by digging ditch on each side of the road. Some of it we have to pour out in the center of the road, it's a larger ballast material down, so.
Check the drag script, we got a call on that one yesterday, of frost boil?
Okay.
Yeah, it should be really boiled up in there.
Okay, I'll take a look.
Anything else? Anybody else have anything for Ben?
Thanks.
You're all welcome to come out tomorrow, around...
You know, you've told us way back on that, it's basically they're going to confirm the dates.
Yeah, more or less, they're going to, they're going to hand us a list of their source materials, subcontractors will be there so that everybody can be on the same page as far as when they're planning on moving in. I mean, I think the survey are already out there putting stakes in along the sides of the road for their control. I have no idea what's going on with the digital signature thing, if you've gotten more emails or not. I haven't heard of it. Okay, I'll try and touch base with her, because she doesn't return phone calls.
Joey, turn email reader.
Digital nightmare. It is, it's terrible. That's ridiculous.
Maybe by the end of my term, you know, we can get on.
Well, I figured the DOT'd get mad that we're having a pre-con meeting if they haven't figured out the signatures, but that's on them, that shouldn't be on us.
Right, they're the ones that want electronic signatures, not you.
Yeah, it streamlines everything for them.
I can see that.
Yeah, how many days have we spent on it so far?
Two, three.
Yeah, a couple hours at a time.
Yeah. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thanks.
All right, thanks, Ben. Thanks, Ben.
Okay, we got a letter there from Dean to promote Roger to sergeant. We have a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve Roger Bennett for the promotion to sergeant.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Is he the night superintendent then or...
I'm going to take a guess, yes, but I'm not going to confirm that from what I think.
I don't think, I thought he's just the one that's...
He's just taking, moving up.
He's moving up for the position that we lost.
From Cory. No. Cory Lampy took Brian from, Brian's retired, he's filling Brian's spot. Not his spot, he's just moving up the list, no.
Um, this is that new position that you guys created, the sergeant.
The night superintendent, night boss, one in the control at night.
Well, if that's what it is, then I guess that's what it is.
Because you already have Cory Lampy taking Brian's position.
Effective May, March 29th.
Have we discussed this, or did I miss it?
I remember him coming in and talking.
Yeah, he discussed it.
I don't remember, it was about a month ago or so, wasn't it, something like that?
Okay.
That he came in.
I'm a little confused, because he was talking about the jailer last, was it last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, that was last week, yeah. And...
This was even, was that a month ago or something?
Okay.
He needed, yeah, he was a month or so, he needed somebody who's kind of...
Being in charge at night.
At night, yeah, I think he was having some issues there.
Yeah, nice, yeah, you're good at it. You got it, you got it.
With Cory and with the jail, I don't know.
Yeah, it's too many, too many different things, three different, last two months.
Okay, motion to second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Foe, carry. Quote for the wheat sprays.
That's just official, there's nothing different, nothing new. Just that this is what Don uses for his file.
Or just appointing BMW to be our wheat... Or just appointing BMW to be our weed control people. I'll make, I'll make the motion for BMW to be our brush control.
Second that.
Or weed control, I guess.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
And, yeah, we, I mean, I'll just say that this does cover the whole county for pistol control, and reiterate that our giant ragweed and any other particular weeds are a spot spray basis, so we have to know the spots. But this is just so Don's got official, and he carries insurance on it, so this gives him something for his records and ours to know that we're doing it that way.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in, Gary. Okay, we didn't get this one on there last week, we were supposed to approve the class B native wine permit for Sunday sale for Western Edge.
I'll make the motion for the wine permit for Western Edge for Sunday.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All paperwork's in order?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in? Gary. Yeah, Randy. Yeah, we've had a workshop some this morning, this day late. Are you gonna maybe get up to it?
No, you're fine.
Well, head this away, time you get here, we'll probably be ready to go. Get that to work. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and I hadn't even gotten the magazine yet, 'cause I can't remember what day it came out, but I wasn't home yet.
Nathan, you don't wear, drink coffee, do you?
I gotta thank them.
You're not a big boy yet.
No. See, I've even come over.
Is the coffee any good this morning?
Yeah.
I'm all good, Dave.
Good job, Dave.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's your solid.
That's all right.
Really, yeah, I wouldn't have guessed that, it's good.
No, it's just fine.
There's drinks at all those. All right, committee report.
Hey, on Tuesday the twenty-sixth afternoon, I had a decategorization meeting in Webster City. I'll spare you the gory details of that board, but taken into account, it was, it was good, but it's very confusing. But we did get through the meeting in good shape on Wednesday, or excuse me, that was Tuesday, and so on Friday, I met with Ben and Dave, concerned landowner over by Bradgate, about, they wanna do a little... Not so much a ditch cleanout, but there's no ditch there at all by Bradgate. They want to get at least a little bit of, maybe the road built up, a little bit of depression, if you will, so that, yeah, you can't control the river, but the normal rainfall, so that has a place to get away, so it should be...
That is there between Bradgate and Lubato?
Yes, so they were concerned that cleaning out the ditch would be a huge mistake, and then said that's not what our intention was, and so, we just went over it, it was a very good meeting, they alleviated their concerns. But they're still gonna see if they can make at least some improvement there, let's say unfortunately, we can't keep the river from going out, but it can help other times, because it is just absolutely as flat as the table.
The road will, it'll help the road.
It'll help the road, raise the road a bit, get a little bit of a, I'll call it more of a depression than really re-establishing a ditch, and it just helps with the road.
At least so when the water runs out of the field, it don't sit on the road.
Right.
That's what it's doing now.
Yes, or, you know, under non-flooding conditions, we get a two-inch rain, it can get off the road. Right now, it has absolutely nowhere to go.
It's just under the road.
Yep, that was really more the intention, so that was a good, good discussion. It's when people have concerns and kind of alleviate their concerns, so, met with them, and that's what I had officially last week.
All right, I met with, I think it was Tuesday, I can't remember for sure, but Ed Smith and Dave Paul out looking at a driveway out here on Roosevelt. It's at a dredge ditch, and it's a driveway next to the dredge ditch in the berm, where there isn't a pipe through the ditch.
So it's real close, right next to?
Right, yeah, it is the road, road ditch right away.
But it been the driveway?
The driveway is, yeah.
Right next to?
You know, like, every box culvert, you know, there's a berm, so the water from the road doesn't run right directly into the ditch. And for some reason, this one doesn't have a pipe through the driveway, and Ed wants a pipe put in driveway, but Ed doesn't wanna pay for the pipe.
Well, of course he doesn't.
And, and he was wondering why isn't there a pipe in there when it was built, why wasn't the pipe put in originally? And I said, I don't know, so I drove around, looked about eight different crossings where dredge ditches crossroads, and every single one of them's got pipes in all four corners, or an intake, or some sort of drainage. I spoke with Ben about it, and Ben said, you know, we'll put the pipe in if he pays for the pipe. And says, I don't think I should have to pay for the pipe, it should've been designed that way. So I said I'd discuss it with the board, and we'll come up with a conclusion for him.
Is that the reference of the, didn't Benny email us on that?
Did you get the rest of the story?
No.
But Bruce just mentioned about the flow of water used to go a different way.
I wouldn't say so. You all look at, it comes down the hill to the road ditch, there should be a pipe through this road. Because it shouldn't run from the road ditch, build up in the road ditch, and then run across a guy's field.
True.
'Cause every single...
You did, your investigation showed a pipe.
I did, I, I don't know, there was no pipe.
No, not that one, but the other ones?
Absolutely, everyone I went to had a pipe or an intake in it.
Good, good work.
The only one I found was one where the, actually the road sloped away from the ditch, so if you did put a pipe, water wouldn't, it wouldn't run through there.
How big are the pipes?
Fifteen inch.
Fifteen, that isn't much.
Fifteen to eighteen. So I, you know, I told that I'd look at it, and Ben said he'd do what we tell him to do, but he says their policy is that, you know, when farmers put in driveways, they pay for the pipe, we put the...
Yep.
And Ed's thought on this is, it was a design error when the, when the ditch was put in with the road, whichever one was, I'm assuming the ditch was there before the road, because you probably couldn't get the road in with, with the swamp. But, yeah, they look back in the records, there's never been a pipe in that area.
So this isn't a new driveway that they put in?
No, no, it's been there, been there forever, you know, so I, I decided to bring it up and...
Just out of curiosity, is it a wide driveway, or is it just kind of a...
Oh, it's a nice driveway.
Fifty foot?
Yeah, it's at least. I mean, it'd take eighty feet of pipe, seventy, eighty feet of pipe, probably four sections. So it'd be a thousand bucks, roughly. So I'd, I'd mention it, and we could just, you know, think about it and come to a conclusion, and, so, that's for... Guys think about it for a week, we'll talk about it next week.
Well, my, my opinion is if we're gonna do it, let's do it before the spring rains, or before we have a two thousand gallons of water sitting on the one side, then invite that for a month, trying to get it, you know?
Then it won't be, then it won't be dry.
Then it won't be dry, and then we'll be, 'cause that'll be our luck, and I'm not saying let's move it ahead to today, 'cause we don't have it on the agenda, but I like the idea of, there's no sense sticking our head in the sand and saying it didn't exist if it was a mess up, but it was a mess up.
That's, that's what I, I looked, looked at it, is every single one I looked at had some form of drainage.
I'm glad that you went and looked at other ones, because, you know, I knew about this a little bit.
'Cause I, oh, okay.
But I, you know, of course, I didn't go look, but that was good, but you, every other one had some, something.
Yeah, it's, it's either that, or it sloped away from the drainage.
Where it didn't need it.
Where it didn't need it.
So it was probably just an oversight when they originally did this, then?
That's my thoughts.
Yeah, that's not the guy's fault.
Yeah, I don't know, like, when these were all built, who put that pipe in?
It's hard to say, but I think you're right.
How long ago was that?
Probably in oh-five.
Hundred years, hundred and... Hundred and twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, a hundred years.
'Cause like Rick said, there probably was no road, because it was a swamp, 'til they got the dredge ditch installation.
Yeah, when they built the roads, I mean...
More like a horse path, maybe, if you were lucky.
And then, and when we do any repair, we always put a pipe in.
Yep, I would just, 'cause I don't know, some, I know you have trouble with your emails sometimes, and I know...
Yeah, I still got that working.
It means you've done really good investigative work, just double check with Ben.
Yeah, I will. I, yeah, I, I told Ed I'd present it to the board, get their opinion, and we talked to Ben about it, and...
And I really like to say, I like Bruce's thought, too, we're not wishing for torrential rains, but, you know, we're never always that lucky, and something that, yeah, could take a look at it pretty quick.
Yeah, it basically what it does, all the water from up the hill comes down the road ditch, then it runs across his land to an intake that's down in his field.
Yeah.
And really, should our road ditch water run across his field?
'Cause it can't get away.
No, it should, yeah, 'cause it can't get away.
No more than our ditches are built to drain their...
Yeah, our ditches aren't made to drain their fields.
Right.
Yep, I can kinda see it that way.
But whatever, anyway, and then on Thursday, I had a interview with the hiring firm that we hired for the landfill.
Oh.
Being as a board member, they interviewed the board members. So that they could tell the candidate.
Did you pass?
I don't know.
At least they know what they're coming into.
I'm the alternate on that board.
Then I make sure they, he told the interviewees that Humboldt's a great place to live.
Is that the guy from Texas, or...
No.
Oh, is it different?
No, the guy from Texas turned us down.
Oh, that's right, he's the guy that turned it down, okay.
Yeah, so they, they're, they're, they got several candidates they're looking at.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Okay, on Tuesday the twenty-sixth, I had our Edmo meeting, and now we are officially moved to Fort Dodge as opposed to Eagle Grove, so they've re-assigned areas that we go, instead of going over to Eagle Grove or Fort Dodge, to that meeting place down there.
Is that the Trolley Center?
No, it's over, you know where the new railway store is?
Yeah.
Two buildings east of the Edmo has the, rented that building there, it used to be a realtor office there, but that's where all of their stuff is now.
Okay.
So you have a meet upstairs there at five-thirty, and then Thursday night at Webster City for the CFR meeting. I wrote it down, I'll see if I can find it. The open house for the CFR is in, I wanna say May, May seventeenth, and from three to five-thirty, and we will all be invited down there, it's a Friday afternoon. Um, that thing is, like, the upstairs is almost ready to move stuff in.
Oh, wow.
They got drywall done, the painting's done, uh, it's just kind of a mud hole out to, to get to the... They said they put some more rock down, but downstairs has gone along well. And they sure would like to see everybody if you get an opportunity to come down to that open house, but May seventeenth, it's three to five-thirty, so... That's what I had.
All right, um, Tuesday, I went out, and Eric met me on the twenty-sixth on, it's a culvert that had been washed out, it's one mile north of Pioneer on the east side on Delaware, and the intake is totally gone, it's got a nice big hole there in the, it'd be the west side of the ditch. So I got ahold of Trish, and she was gonna, 'cause it needs to get taken care of, 'cause there's nothing... The water is one, I drove down by the dredge ditch, you could see where the water was coming out, so it is seeping in, but there's no, but there's no intake. So Trish was gonna look into seeing who could come in and get that fixed, get that taken care of.
So that's on a gravel road there?
Yep, on a gravel road.
Mile north of the...
Yeah, so if you go south, it's blacktop, but if you go north, it's gravel.
Right.
And it's probably, I think a quarter of a mile, I figure, probably, north on that road. And then on the twenty-seventh, we had another, this was that actual monthly CSS meeting, and we went through our normal meeting, and then we had, at one o'clock, we had a work, or we worked through, I guess we should put it that way, so we got out of there late in the afternoon to get our HR stuff figured out, since they're still trying to decide whether they wanna be a county record of hire for the employees, or whether they're gonna be CSS employees, but we're getting closer to what everybody's happy with. Got a good way to play.
Yeah.
I mean, some people are gonna have better benefits, and some people are gonna...
Have less.
Have less, but they, they've had an all employee meeting the day before on the twenty-sixth, and they've all agreed on certain, certain things, so they came, they've really compromised very well. I'm really proud of them, they did a good job, and then I got voted to be on the HR committee.
Good deal.
Here, here you've had experience with that, so...
I have had experience with that. They heard, too.
Where was your meeting at?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was in Mason City, over at their Lime Creek, um, Natural Resources, or, you know. It was pretty, it was kind of neat, they were gonna redo it and everything, and I thought it was really nice the way it was. But, yeah, it was kind of fun.
Yep?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that's it.
Okay, on Tuesday, I had a behave meeting in the afternoon, these claims. Tuesday night, we had an animal shelter meeting. It's got a lot of stuff there, redesigned building, get the bylaws and everything set. Wednesday night, had a Midas meeting, and Cliff has turned in his resignation, in fact, in October, I think it was. They wanted to give him six months till they can get somebody else, a new director hired, and everything, he's gonna retire, move, go south for the winter. Um, Thursday morning, I had a board of health meeting, very humble. And that's all I got left here. Okay, anything else coming for the board?
Just in follow-up, Sandy's excellent description, uh, I heard from Rick Peterson, not you, but our contractor, he has that, what you described, repaired.
Okay, oh, he already has it done and repaired, good, 'cause Trish was gonna get ahold of him.
Yes.
It was Johnny on the spot.
Well...
Very good.
Yeah, and I, yeah, actually, just got the information that that was repaired, so that's... And like Sandy said, it was a mess, I relate, we, when we looked at it, I mean, we don't know, it didn't just happen...
It's been a while.
This spring, it hadn't been, 'cause it was, the intake was just nonexistent there. So it was, and I told Rick, thank you for getting that for so quick, but it just, the timing was impeccable.
Yeah, that was, 'cause Trish was gonna try to see if you could get, you can get into it maybe this week, so that was great that he got that.
Yeah, just, so that was, that, that doesn't always happen, but it's nice when it does, and that was a good one to really, to get fixed, so...
Yeah, 'cause we get a lot of rain.
Anything else?
How about Peggy, do you have anything? You're awful quiet.
Nothing wrong with you.
Nothing, that was good, wasn't it?
No, nothing that was good.
Do you wanna tell us about a wet basement?
No.
Okay.
My daughter kept sending me texts saying, are you having fun today, 'cause I told her when I had fun, I was gonna send her pictures.
No, you weren't.
I didn't send her any pictures. So it's kind of nice to be back to work.
Yeah, some days money's not so bad.
The team is good.
Yes.
Okay, nothing else, or have a motion to adjourn?
All moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in, nine twenty-one.